It is a pleasure to have the opportunity to share with you some progress on the state of our economy. After two years in government, during which we have been implementing the policies that Ghanaians voted for. This occasion also provides the economic management team an opportunity to interact with the public and to answer questions on the economy. The timing of this interaction is also important because it was only yesterday that Ghana formally and successfully completed the IMF programme that we inherited in 2017. On behalf of members of the EMT, I present to you our progress, where we are and the way forward. Our presentation today, as always, is based on an analysis of the data and the facts. The data will speak for itself. If you disagree, you should bring your own data and your record. But don't disagree by saying that the EMT members have big heads. You only resort to insults when you are allergic to facts. First, let me recall briefly the state of the economy we inherited and how far we have come since 2016. Ladies and gentlemen, at the heart of Ghana's recurrent economic difficulties has been the management of public finances, especially during election years, and the challenges in cleaning up the post-election mess. Our public financial management and our fiscal excesses, particularly in the run-up to the 2012 elections, was very damaging to our prospects of managing the economy that is trying to climb up the middle income ladder. The economy ended 2012 with a fiscal deficit of 12.2% of GDP. 2011 of 11.7% of GDP deficit. And 2013 of 11.7% of GDP. And 2014 of 11.9% of fiscal deficit, before falling to 6.7% in 2015, but rose again to 9.3% in 2016. We recorded in this period, for the first time in Ghana's history, double-digit fiscal deficits in three consecutive years and plunged into a deep fiscal hole. The debt pile-up began. Debt service became burdensome on the budget. Inflation soared. External trade balances worsened. And the economy became more and more vulnerable to external shocks. This poor state of public finances, weak implementation and lack of policy credibility resulted in Ghana requesting an IMF bailout in August 2014. Since there was no meat on the bone, to fill the deep hole in public finances, government resorted to some tough fiscal measures, notably the increase in the tax burden on every conceivable consumer item and production activities. In addition to hiring freezes, there were cuts to a number of areas of spending, most notably cuts to research allowances for lecturers, nursing training allowances, teacher training allowances. By the end of 2016, the fundamentals of the economy were generally weak. Real GDP growth declined from 9.1% in 2008 and to 3.4% in 2016. Growth in agriculture was declining. Growth in industry was declining. The public debt, which stood at 32% of GDP in 2008, had reached 70.2% of GDP by 2014. And at that point, Ghana became classified as a country at high risk of debt distress. A country at high risk of debt distress. And we are still trying to get ourselves out of this classification. Interest rates were high and the banking system was weak. With rising unemployment, unemployed graduates association became the new enviable club in town. When you look at the data, ladies and gentlemen, the overall performance of the previous government on the macroeconomic indicators, when you look at them, you will notice distinctly a different performance between 2009 and the 2011 period and then the 2012 to the 2016 period. The 2012 to the 2016 period was much, much worse, even though the external environment was favorable. So what have we done in the past two years? Following the overwhelming mandate to change the trajectory and the fortunes of the economy, the president Nana Dudankwa Kufuado set down his markers for change. The overarching objective is to build a modern, prosperous and private sector-driven economy anchored on a vision of Ghana beyond aid. The overarching objective will be broken down into a number of sub-objectives. And I will address this particular town hall following these sub-objectives. The pursuit of stable macroeconomy. Pursuing inclusive transformation to help the poor and the vulnerable in our society and ensure social equity. Pursuing the formalization of the economy by leveraging technology for digitization. Enhancing the ease of doing business to remove bottlenecks that impeded the private sector development. Reforming and enhancing the competitiveness of our ports. And this is where I will talk about port reform and announce some measures that the cabinet has taken. And transforming the structure of the economy through diversification, technological innovation and greater value addition in our production processes. All these are to be supported by building a sound banking system, strengthened infrastructural investment and good governance, especially in fighting corruption. Let me share with you our progress on these fronts. On macroeconomic stability, a major flagship programme of the government is the restoration of macroeconomic stability on a sustainable basis as an anchor for economic growth and enhanced private sector progress. The pillars. The ability of the economy to produce goods and services measured by real GDP growth is increasing. Growth for 2017 was 8.1%, one of the highest in the world in that year, significantly exceeding the average Sub-Saharan African growth of 2.7%, as the figure one would show. You would see that from 2017, Ghana's growth in 2018, Ghana's growth has exceeded the Sub-Saharan African growth. GDP growth remained robust in 2018, almost double the average in Sub-Saharan Africa. But what is also important is that non-oil growth, as you would see in the second figure, non-oil growth has increased from 4.6% to 5.8%. And this strong growth performance has resulted in an increase in per capita income, which today is at 9,864 Ghana cedis, which is 30% higher than in 2016. Our challenge, ladies and gentlemen, is to make the distribution fair, especially to the benefit of the weak, disadvantaged and vulnerable in society. This is the ultimate goal of our inclusive transformation. The recent growth performance has been driven mainly by industry and agriculture. The latter, agriculture, particularly reflecting the effect of policy interventions in the sector, most notably the planting for food and jobs. This has resulted in an increase in agricultural sector growth from 2.9% in 2016 to 6.8% by 2018. And this agriculture sector growth has been driven by crop production. The industrial sector performance has been underpinned by petro-carbon production initially and increasing investment in manufacturing sector as we work to stabilize the macroeconomic environment and improve the ease of doing business. Then to fiscal and monetary policy. So on the growth side, we are seeing that growth has picked up and it is increasing. The growing confidence in the macroeconomy owes a lot to the prudent management of our finances and monetary affairs over the last two years. The prudent management by the Ministry of Finance and the prudent management by the Bank of Ghana. They performed a complementary role in managing our monetary and financial environment. The efficiency in expenditure management has come from prioritizing and reallocation of spending to areas most needed. We had to prioritize. If you look at this graph, you would see that spending has come down as we reprioritize in this context. And that has resulted in the fiscal deficit on a cash basis reducing from 6.8% of re-based GDP in 2016 to an estimated 3.8% in 2018. Ladies and gentlemen, to give you a sense of the prudence in fiscal management, for the first time in a decade, Ghana recorded primary balance surplus. Primary balance is the tax revenue exceeding all government expenditure excluding debt service payments. Right? So that is your primary balance. But for the first time in a decade, the primary balance, we've attained primary balance surpluses for two years in a row. The primary balance was in surplus of 0.5% of GDP in 2017 and 1.4% in 2018, compared to a deficit of 1.1% of GDP in 2016. A positive primary balance is important because it means a slowing down of debt accumulation. To underpin fiscal discipline going forward so that we don't get into this election cycle increases in fiscal expenditure that create these deep fiscal holes. To underpin this going forward, Ghana has for the first time in our history passed a law, a Fiscal Responsibility Act that limits the fiscal deficit in any year to a maximum of 5% of GDP and requires by law a positive primary balance. In addition, a fiscal council has been established to provide oversight and advice on the implementation of fiscal policy. These are new measures and new institutions that we have set up for the first time in our history. On the public debt, the total public debt has increased from 122 billion in 2016 to 173 billion, including the cost of the banking sector cleanup at the end of 2018. However, the strong fiscal adjustment and better debt management has meant that the rate of debt accumulation, which is at 12%, excluding the banking sector cleanup, the rate of debt accumulation is at its lowest in the last decade. And you will see the graph, I think, on the rate of debt accumulation. Although in absolute terms, interest payments have increased over the last two years with much better debt management, interest payments as a percentage of GDP have gone down from 6.9% in 2016 to 5.6% of GDP in 2018. And therefore, the debt burden of interest payments has declined. So yes, the additional borrowing has not added significantly to the debt service obligations as a percentage of GDP, and this is good debt management. Total public debt as a percentage of GDP slowed down to 54% in 2018. And in fact, this, the 2017-2018 period, is the first time our debt has come down as a percentage of GDP since 2008. So it is significant. But the total debt as a percentage of GDP slowed down to 54.8%. And this created the room for the government to accommodate the painful but very necessary banking sector reforms, which cost government close to 3.2% of GDP. A combination of prudent monetary policy and fiscal consolidation over the last 24 months, supported by zero central bank financing of government and strong external sector developments, have underpinned a steady disinflation process over the last 24 months. Inflation has dropped steadily from at the high of 15.4% at the end of 2016 to 9% at the end of January 2019. This is the lowest we have seen in the last six years. The steady disinflation process provides scope for significant monetary policy easing. The Bank of Ghana's monetary policy rate has been cut by a cumulative 950 basis points, or 9.5% to you and I, between 2017 and 2019. 9.5% reduction in the Bank of Ghana monetary policy rate. This has translated into also a reduction in short-term rates. Lending rates have fallen from an average of 32% to 27% in 2018. So we are seeing inflation declining and having an impact on interest rates. Further to now the banking sector. Further to the strengthening of the monetary and financial environment, the Bank of Ghana has recently undertaken reforms in the banking sector aimed at strengthening the sector to support the growth agenda of government. The consolidation of banks from 34 to 23, with the liquidation of some nine of them at the end of 2018, have resulted in a banking sector that is well-capitalized, liquid, well-positioned to improve the flow of funds in the economy and to drive private sector-led growth and development. This however has not been costless. Government had to spend a total of some 12 billion Ghana cedis for the banking sector cleanup in order to restore confidence and promote financial stability. We had a very precarious situation. Most people don't realize how close we were to the brink. But government had to step in and save the financial system and save the deposits of 1.5 million depositors. 1.5 million depositors. The cleanup has also resulted in a fresh capital injection in excess of 4 billion into the banking industry. How has this worked out? According to the Bank of Ghana, just their recent monetary policy release, and I quote, "Private sector credit growth has gained some momentum stemming from the improved liquidity position of the banks on the back of the recapitalization increase." Annual private sector credit growth was 21.1% as at February 2019, compared with 2.4% in the same period in 2018. In real terms, private sector credit growth expanded by 10.9%. So we are restoring credit growth in the banking sector. And this cleanup of the banking sector is going to yield positive results. Going forward, government and all financial regulators are committed to promoting a strong, resilient financial system. The establishment of the Financial Stability Council, which brings all the regulators together, is to ensure effective coordination among the financial regulators and to strengthen financial stability. Again, like with the Fiscal Council, the Financial Stability Council is an innovation. We've never had it in Ghana. And we are the only, only the second country in Africa to have a financial stability council and also a fiscal council. Let's look at our external performance. Ghana's external payments position has strengthened for the first time in over two decades. Two decades, that is 20 years. The trade balance, that is the difference between the export and what we import, recorded a surplus in 2017 and an even larger surplus in 2018. It is not because we are importing less, but largely because of increased exports of oil and exports of other traditional commodities, cocoa and gold. The positive trade balance has resulted in a significant narrowing of the current account deficit as a percentage of GDP. Improvements in the current account performance and increased capital inflows have helped to boost the international reserves over the last 24 months. Gross international reserves reached $7.56 billion at the end of December 2017. Despite these improvements, the net foreign exchange reserve declined in 2018, first as forex sales by the Bank of Ghana, first is the forex sales by the Bank of Ghana in its normal exchange rate management, and second is the portfolio of outflows as foreign investors repatriated coupons, those are the investments here and principal investments over concerns about Ghana's exit from the IMF programme. There were jitters in the market because Ghana was leaving the IMF programme. Following the recent euro bond issue, Ghana's gross international reserves as the end of March 2019 stands at $9.9 billion, equivalent to five months of import cover. I now turn my attention to the exchange rate. The exchange rate is simply the price of one currency relative to other currencies. For example, the CD relative to the dollar. At the basic level, it is influenced by relative demand and supply for the foreign currency. Factors such as the inflation rate, the balance of trade, the fiscal balance, money supply. These are what we refer to as the fundamentals. These factors influence the exchange rate. But speculation and expectations about these fundamentals, external shocks such as oil price increases can also have powerful short-term effects on the exchange rate. When we see pressures on the exchange rate, first we need to determine where these pressures are coming from and whether the pressures are transitory or permanent. And as every astute central banker knows, even with strong economic fundamentals, speculation, expectations and investor sentiment can exert pressures on the exchange rate. Ladies and gentlemen, you will recall that I stated in 2014 that if the fundamentals are weak, the exchange rate will expose you. That was true then. That was true then, and it is true now. It is 100% correct. So if the fundamentals are weak, the exchange rate will expose you. But it is warped logic to jump from that to a conclusion that if there is depreciation in your currency, then the fundamentals must be weak. Do you understand the logic? It is very warped logic. If the fundamentals are weak, the exchange rate will expose you. But if the exchange rate moves, you cannot jump to that conclusion that the fundamentals are weak. That defies logic. That defies logic. There could be other external factors causing the exchange rate depreciation. For example, if I tell you that if your leg is broken, you are going to be unable to walk. Then I'm somewhere and somebody comes to tell me, "This person is unable to walk." Can I just conclude that their leg must be broken? There can be other reasons why you are unable to walk. But the NDC logic will insist in the face of contrary evidence that since you cannot walk, then it must mean your leg must be broken. In 2014, the exchange rate depreciated by 31.3%. The fiscal deficit was 10.1% of GDP. The public debt rose to 70.2% of GDP. Inflation rose to 17%. And GDP growth had declined from 7.3% to 4%. In other words, the economic fundamentals had weakened significantly. And therefore, the depreciation was easily explainable. It was not caused by dwarfs or high-rise buildings, as we were told. The exchange rate in 2014 had exposed the weak economic fundamentals. And if you look at the table on the screen, it gives you the fundamentals as we have it in 2014 and you look at them in 2018. Every single one of them, real GDP growth, inflation, the fiscal balance, wage bill, wage bill to GDP, gross debt, interest rates and all of that, current account, all the fundamentals, you will see we were in a much weaker position in 2014 compared to 2018. So, ladies and gentlemen, how has the city performed recently? At the end of December 2017, the city had cumulatively depreciated by 4.9% compared to 9.6% in 2016. And this was the city's best performance since 2011. At the end of 2017, we had the best performance of the city since 2011. The city however depreciated by 8.4% in 2018, largely on account of the emerging market pressures and US interest rate increases. The data, ladies and gentlemen, on the annual rate of depreciation of the city in recent years, and you will see this graph here. It's like 19D. The data on the annual rate of depreciation of the city in recent years shows that the worst performance so far under the MPP government, the 8.4% depreciation that we saw in 2018, that worst performance is better than the best performance under the previous government between 2012 and 2016. So our worst is better than your best. And then you say boot for boot. This one is more like boot for chalewote. Ladies and gentlemen, the start of 2019 has been characterized by another sudden sharp depreciation of the city, which was largely been reversed. Within a week, the city went up close to 5.9 to the dollar. And then it retreated back to about 5.07 and even was threatening to go below 5. and even was threatening to go below five. But this is really an unprecedented development, that you don't normally see such a retreat when the exchange rate depreciates. And this was also, and you see within, in the next graph, when we look at the C D dollar exchange rate, that you will see that in this period when there was a reversal in the C D depreciation, the Bank of Ghana had not intervened in the market. In fact, if you look at it as at March, at the end of March twenty nineteen, the C D has depreciated by about five point one eight percent so far this year. The most, but we have to understand, how come we saw this sort of movement in the exchange rate at the end, at the beginning of the year, a few weeks ago? What happened? Why did it jump so far? Many, many reasons have been given, but let me tell you what happened. The most important and approximate cause of the recent depreciation is the time inconsistency of an IMF prior action on the reserve's target. At the end of January, as part of the seven prior actions, to get to the IMF Board and the completion of the IMF program, the IMF gave Ghana seven actions to complete before March fifteenth. Seven prior actions that we had to meet, seven conditions. One of the conditions that the Bank of Ghana had to meet was to increase its net international reserves to the level of December twenty eighteen. To increase the net international reserves, however, meant that the Bank of Ghana could not sell any foreign exchange in the market. They had to essentially hold their hands to the back and could not intervene on the market during this particular period. So, demand for foreign currency was not met by supply as normally happens on a day-to-day basis. And we know when the demand is greater than the supply or the supply is not coming, the price will go up. And this is exactly what was happening. So to, to meet the Bank of Ghana, and the Bank of Ghana had to increase its reserves by, by about eight hundred million dollars. Uh, and, and, and this explains, you know, um, what was, what was happening. So once, um, the, the, um, the, the reserve's target was met, we then had the IMF Board meeting on March twentieth, which passed Ghana. So this partly explains why the C D came under such pressure. It was the primary reason. Contrary to some speculation, the Bank of Ghana did not spend any reserves to revive the C D following the initial depreciation. Some people have misunderstood the requirement by the IMF for the Bank of Ghana to build up its reserves by some eight hundred million dollars to mean that the bank used eight hundred million dollars to reverse the C D depreciation. That would not be wise. The reason for the sudden reversal in the sharp depreciation that we observed was that the market corrected itself. Investor sentiments, expectations, and uncertainties acknowledged that the fundamentals are much stronger than suspected. And even without the IMF, fiscal and monetary discipline are assured. The reversal of the depreciation that has taken place actually supports the fact that the fundamentals are indeed strong. We should recall, ladies and gentlemen, that the weak fundamentals in twenty fourteen meant that the N D C government of the day had to end up seeking an IMF bailout. The difference today is stark and glaring. Because of our, because our fundamentals are strong, Ghana only yesterday formally exited from the IMF program. Indeed, the strength of Ghana's fundamentals was confirmed on March sixth, twenty nineteen, March sixteenth, twenty nineteen, by Standard and Poor's Global, which affirmed Ghana's sovereign rating as B with a stable outlook after upgrading Ghana's sovereign rating from B minus to B with a stable outlook last year. This, in fact, was the first upgrade by Standard and Poor's for Ghana in ten years. First upgrade in ten years. Second, Ghana also successfully issued a three billion dollar euro bond at more favorable rates than previous issues. The amount offered by investors was over twenty billion dollars. And this is a record in Africa. And it's a strong affirmation of the positive assessment of the fundamentals by the international financial markets. In fact, today Ghana has Africa's longest bond. We have a thirty-one-year bond on the euro bond market. There's no other country. The closest is Morocco, which is thirty years, I think. So it's, it's a vote of confidence. However, we don't live by macroeconomic stability alone. Distinguished guests, ladies and gentlemen, macroeconomic stability is important. It is like fresh air. You can easily take it for granted until someone fouls the air. However, macroeconomic stability alone is not sufficient. It must translate into the well-being of Ghanaians in their everyday living. Safe drinking water, good roads, access to good healthcare, stable and affordable electricity, good education amongst others. Here are some of the policies that the government of Nanao Dan Kwakofuado is implementing that go to the core of the aspirations of Ghanaians. The inclusive transformation agenda that we are pursuing. We are pursuing an inclusive transformation. We want to transform the economy, but we want to make sure everybody is included in that transformation. So the inclusive transformation agenda is to empower Ghanaians, regardless of the circumstances, and to reduce hardships. We are doing so on three fronts. First, we're building human development capacity and expanding job creation opportunities. Second, we are enhancing access to public services. And third, we are empowering local communities and investing in local infrastructure. Where are we on these fronts? As far as human development capacity is concerned and the expanding of job creation opportunities, we introduced the free S H S as a major transformation initiative to developing the human capacity of the future. We've seen just last year a thirty-six percent increase in twenty eighteen alone, meaning that an additional hundred and eighty-one thousand students who would otherwise have been denied secondary education are now having a chance to build a future. We're reserving thirty percent. We reserve, we have reserved thirty percent of the places in the elite schools for people from deprived areas, and this is a little step in addressing inequality. The Get Fund is going to spend one point five billion dollars, and this financing has been arranged in the next three years um, for educational infrastructure, especially uh, in school block, blocks and domitories. We have doubled the capitation grant, more than doubled, from four point five cities, Ghana cities, to ten Ghana cities. We've expanded, we've expanded the school feeding program to cover an additional five hundred thousand children. We've established the Nation Builders Corps to provide employment to hundred thousand graduates who are otherwise sitting at home. And the recruitment in the public service has also gone up. We have, if you look at recruitment and financial clearances for the security services, education, health, forestry, Y E A, and N A P Co., over the last two years, these amount to just over three hundred and fifty thousand jobs. And this is just for these sectors. Just for the sectors I've mentioned. Um, I've not included plenty for food and jobs. Because of the expansion of the economy, ladies and gentlemen, and better payroll management, the wages and salaries as a percentage of GDP, I'd like you to note this, because sometimes people think you're too expansive, but the wages and salaries as a percentage of GDP has declined from seven point two percent to five point eight percent in two thousand and eighteen. So the wages and salaries used to be at seven point two percent of GDP in twenty sixteen, and we've brought it down to five point eight percent, whilst at the same time increasing jobs to people. This is good economic management. The private sector is also adding jobs. We've restored the teacher training allowances, restored the nation training allowances, and we have abolished fees for postgraduate medical training in Ghana. And, and I think this is also, in terms of enhancing access to the delivery of public services, in another uh, three weeks' time or less, uh, three weeks' time, we will see medical delivery by drones begin in Ghana of critical medicines. Critical medicines and blood. The start will be from Suhum, and then we'll spread it out to the rest of the country. We have increased the share of the District Assembly Common Fund to persons with disabilities from two percent to three percent. We have also ensured the implementation of our pledge of employing fifty percent of the persons who manage the country's toll booths from amongst persons with disabilities. The LEAP empowerment has added one hundred and fifty thousand beneficiaries. On pensions, in November twenty seventeen, government transferred three point one billion Ghana series of tier-two pension funds from custodial accounts to the pension schemes of the labor union fund, of, of the labor unions, funds that had been outstanding since twenty thirteen. We are also empowering local communities. The Creative Arts Council, uh, in twenty eighteen, uh, we provided support to the Creative Arts Council, uh, and we're building, capacity building. We are also building the Eastern, we've also built the Eastern Regional Theater. The work has been completed and work is ongoing on the theater in Kumasi. We want to do a theater in every region. Under the National Entrepreneurship Innovation Program, thousand three hundred and fifty startups and small businesses have benefited from government business support, with beneficiaries receiving a range of ten thousand Ghana cities to hundred thousand Ghana cities each at an interest rate of ten percent. We have increased access to electricity and reduced tariffs of seventeen point five percent for households and thirty percent for businesses. We've also established the Zongo Development Fund to finance infrastructure. Under the Infrastructure for Poverty Eradication and Development, many projects are taking place across all two hundred and seventy-five constituencies, including warehouses, one village, one dam, water systems, toilets, rural markets, clinics. Uh, and also, we have ordered the one, uh, the two hundred and seventy-five ambulances under this program for the one constituency, one ambulance program. So, so much is happening. On the management of the economy, many may not appreciate how much work has been done by this government. But if you ask the question, how do you take an economy which is in a deep fiscal hole with no meat on the bone, with a high deficit, a high debt burden, high interest rates, an economy which could not pay basic obligations such as teacher and nursing training allowances, with a weak banking system that was on the verge of collapse, and at the same time you reduce seventeen taxes, implement free S H S, restore teacher training allowances and nursing training allowances, introduce N A P Co., introduce many other social interventions, and at the same time you reduce the budget deficit and increase economic growth? How do you do this? How do you do this? It takes competent economic management. That's how you do it. Ladies and gentlemen, let's look at how we have tried to leverage technology for formalization of the economy. In this area, so much is going on, some people don't even know. Ladies and gentlemen, the Ghanaian society is largely informal. In such an environment, access to services targeting in the delivery of public services to those who need these services most, the deprived, become difficult. And in most cases, it depends on who you know. For the banking sector, lending rates are high partly because of the high information problems in establishing identity and in verifying ownership of property. These have to change if we are aspiring to become a middle-income country. It is for all these reasons that we are aggressively pursuing the agenda to formalize the economy through digitization. For the public sector, leveraging on technology and digitization of systems improve administrative systems and the way we govern ourselves. In a well-functioning society, citizens don't need to know somebody or bribe somebody to get a passport, driver's, driver's license, access to water or electricity. We cannot build a fair and equitable society that runs on engines of bribes, guru boys, and land cards. With digitization, we are introducing new and more efficient ways of doing things. We are changing the way things are done in the affected institutions for the benefits of ordinary Ghanaians. Here are a few of the reforms we have undertaken and we are undertaking in the digitization space. We have, the introduction of the national I D card is a game changer despite its thieving challenges. So far, about five hundred thousand cards have been issued, uh, and we've had the pilots take place in Addenta and Medina. We expect the mass issuance to commence at the end of April. On the digital property addressing, the process of tagging all four million homes with digital addresses is ongoing, supported by the Ministry of Special Initiatives and the Ministry for Local Government. We've digitized driver's licenses and vehicle registration. We've introduced mobile payments interoperability. This has been implemented. It's a major, major step to financial inclusion. And because of mobile payments interoperability, today, if you have a mobile phone and you have mobile money, you can pay money into a bank account and also receive money from a bank account. So you don't really need to have a bank account, and this is why all the holders of mobile money account can have access to some banking services. And it is a major, major uh, stride that we have made in this country. In fact, Ghana is the only country in Africa, the only country in Africa where you have that type of interoperability between mobile money and the bank account. It's the only country in Africa. The digitization of the land registry is, is going on. We have, we are, we are really moving to digitize the land registry so that you don't get to, to the land registry and someone will tell you your document is missing. Uh, so there is a major program that is start, that has been started uh, for us to digitize the land registry um, in Ghana, and, and it is proceeding well. Passport applications are now online, and the passport duration has been increased from five to ten years. Renewal of N H I S registration via mobile phone has been, has seen a phenomenal innovation with an average of seventy thousand renewals every week, N H I S. And all, be, before, our people had to go and line up outside offices and wait, sometimes for days in the rural areas, to get N H I S renewal. But today, all you need to do is take your mobile phone, dial star nine two nine hash, get there, use your mobile money to pay, and bingo, you have been renewed. To enhance access to telephone and digital services in rural areas, government has deployed two hundred rural telephony sites for broadband access, seven, five hundred communities in the last two years. Two hundred in the last two years. In the previous government, they did only seventy-eight in eight years of the rural telephony sites, seventy-eight in eight years. Finally, the management of the State Transport Corporation has introduced online ticketing for state transport corporation buses, where you can book and pay for your ticket using your mobile phone. This is currently being transported. So we will no longer need to go to transport yard to line up, buy a ticket. You sit at home, pay for it, select your seat, and off you go. We have also launched an emergency one-one-two number for the police, fire, and ambulance services, and work is ongoing. and work is ongoing to integrate this emergency 112 number with the national digital address system, so that the emergency services will immediately know when you call, exactly where you are calling from. So this is a major thing. You can try the 112. A lot of people don't even know that the emergency number works, but if you need police, ambulance or fire service, just dial 112 from wherever you are. We are working on the integration, but once the integration is complete, immediately the emergency services receive the call, they will know exactly where it's coming from because they will know the digital address of the property where you are calling from. The digitisation of the police information systems has also resulted in a deployment of 1,000 cameras across the country, with central monitoring centre in Accra as well as digital call centres in Kumasi and Tamale, to monitor all the 16 regions. The next phase, which is being championed by the police and national security, will see 8,000 cameras deployed throughout the country to fight crime. We've also been working very hard at the ease of doing business. And here again, we are trying to help companies, businesses as part of the digitisation agenda. For example, now, to register a business, we've changed the way it is done. To register a business, instead of filling four separate forms, to start a business, only one form is now required. The registrar general has merged all four forms that is starting a business, that is the tin application, the snit application, the business operating permit and also the business registration form. They've been merged into one and it's automated. So everybody will get this and you'll get your business operating permit issued as well as the certificate for registration as well. So it's a major relief to people who go trying to go to different parts just to register a business. We've also automated the process of obtaining a construction permit. So I know contractors will be happy now with this. But even more remarkable is the implementation, thanks to the work of the Chief Justice, of an electronic justice system that allows automated serving of court processes with speed and ease. When fully operational, court documents will be easy to find and track and there will be no duplication of the same case to be heard by different courtrooms and by different judges. This is a major innovation and I delve my heart to the Chief Justice. We've also looked at the process of obtaining electricity to your house. There were about seven different steps. We've reduced it to three and by the end of the year, they are promising us that the process of obtaining electricity in your house will go completely paperless. So we'll try to hold them to that. We've introduced a paperless port system that has reduced the time to clear goods at the ports to less than 48 hours. And this is all very good. As I mentioned also, we've abolished 17 nuisance taxes. So you are seeing the ease of doing business. We are enhancing the ease of doing business with all of these reforms. Another area is the structure of the economy. We are changing the structure of the economy through value addition and this is key to going beyond aid. We know about the planting for food and jobs and what it has done. We've established the Ghana Commodity Exchange, which is an ultra-modern trading system linked to warehouses located across this country to connect markets. We know about the one district, one factory policy, which we are implementing, the stimulus package to existing businesses. We've also started the integrated bauxite and aluminium industry. This is an exciting industry, a new industry, one that Ghana has wanted to do since the days of Nkrumah, but we have not had the opportunity to do it. Thankfully, we are in the process of doing so now and I believe, and the data shows, that the integrated bauxite industry will be more valuable to Ghana than the oil industry. And we are doing, because of all the linkages downstream, we are also looking at, I mean, and so we are on course with that. We are also looking at the automotive industry and you see many, many, an automotive policy has come out and many companies are going to be setting up in Ghana. What we have done for bauxite, we are doing exactly the same for the iron and steel industry. A bill is currently in parliament and we think it will be passed before the rise so that with the iron and steel industry and the bauxite industry will rise together in this country to change the game. So it is really key what we are doing. The energy sector is however key to industrialisation. We inherited many challenges in the sector, but these challenges are being addressed. Ghana has excess capacity in energy generation, but the contracts entered into for many of these IPPs are expensive and fundamentally and financially burdensome. Many of these contracts are take or pay arrangements. This means that even if we don't need the power, we still have to pay for it. Ghana is currently paying $24 million a month in excess capacity charges alone for the power we have not used. This will increase to about $41 million a month later this year with the coming on stream of cent power, ele power and amande power plants. Even though we don't have problems with power generation capacity, we have problems with transmission and the gridco network is old and it has been thus far unable to invest in high-capacity lines. The takeover by, of ECG by PDS should help bring in much-needed investments. The Millennium Challenge Cooperation Compact is expected to result in some $1 billion invested in the power sector over the next five years. Ladies and gentlemen, Ghana has enough gas to power all our plants without relying on imported gas. Gas is so much cheaper than liquid fuel. This is why a policy decision has been taken to switch largely to the use of gas in energy generation. However, most of our gas is in the west of Ghana and most of our power plants are in the east. And so we have to overcome the transportation bottlenecks. But if we do this switch, which should be done this year, the estimates are that we will save about $300 million annually, just on that switch. The West African Gas Pipeline supplies gas from the east to the west and this is why we are doing a reverse flow to move the gas from the west to the east. The first phase of the reverse flow will be completed this month, which will allow us to transport some 60 million scarves from the west to the east. And the final, the completion of this work should be done between July and August, that's the phase two of it, which, after which, fingers crossed and God willing, we should not be able, we should not import any gas anymore. We'll use all domestic gas. So by July, August, we will be using domestic gas, if all, this thing, and which will really bring down cost of gas in this country. And of course, car power is also moving to the west to be the off-taker for this, for this gas. You know, we have also, the Ministry of Finance has also been directed, one of the major problems in this, at the heart of the energy sector is short collections by ECG. We are not collecting enough, or now PDS. And this, when the ECG doesn't collect enough, they don't pay the others in the value chain, gridco and so on, and this provides, and the other IPPs. So unfortunately, government has been the major culprit in not paying bills. And so cabinet has directed that the Ministry of Finance should henceforth pay the bills, not through the MDAs, but pay directly to the utility, so that there will be no middle person in there. We are going to see more prepaid meters in operation. Ladies and gentlemen, I will move on to port reforms. Our ports remain important national assets and we must manage it to improve trade to the benefit of all Ghanaians. Government has devoted considerable energy over the last two years with different stakeholders, shippers, importers, exporters, freight forwarders, traders, spare part dealers, listening to their concerns. What was baffling to us was that even though the MPP government had not increased import duties, there were persistent complaints that duties at the ports were high. So government set up a ports review committee to review the competitiveness of Ghana's ports within the West African region. Here are some of the surprising findings. Here are some of the surprising findings. Except for Nigeria, the total marine charges and security fees charged at Tema for container handling far exceed those of our key competitors. In fact, they are three times the charges in Lomé and nearly twice the charges in Abidjan. No port in West Africa is charging the equivalent of the Ghana maritime security fee of nearly $20,000 per vessel entering our ports. Import handling charges are higher in Tema than in any port in West Africa. While nearly 90% of containers that come to Tema are physically examined, physically, they open them and stuff them, examine and re-stuff them. 90% are physically examined, only about 5% are subject to physical examination in any modern ports. Physical examination is a major source of corruption at the ports. Data however, because we wanted to find out, all this physical examination, how much does it add to revenue? When we asked that question, it was a semaba. Because, how much? 90%? So how much did it add to revenue? The result was that it added 0.38%. 0.3, not even 0.5. So it's less than 0.4%. All the wahala that you put importers through with all this examination, 0.38% additional revenue. So the time, the unofficial facilitation fees and the energy spent in collecting this amount totally negates any gains this may have brought to the government. Many port charges, many port charges are a percentage of the value of the goods and this makes them exorbitant and hardly justifiable. Why should the cost of scanning a container, a vehicle examination fee, a network charge be a percentage of the value of the goods in the container? Why should the cost of processing the documentation covering imports be a percentage of the cost of the value of the goods? In most modern ports, these fees are flat charges. It's the same, whether it's the good, you take a picture, it's $1 or $2 or $10. It's the same. So it is like a photographer wanting to take a picture of you. You are two people. One is wearing a Rolex watch and they'll charge you a higher fee for your picture. The other who doesn't have a watch will pay lower. It doesn't make sense. The benchmark values we found also applied by customs to various commodities in the computation of import duties in Tema are much higher than in Lomé, Abidjan and Dakar. In many cases, they are 100 to 200% higher. If you take for example a Ford Focus 2009 model and you go to Tema, our benchmark will say it is worth $9,000. You go next door to Lomé, the same car, they benchmark it at $3,000. And the same car in Dakar are also exactly as in Lomé, exactly the same price of $3,000. So it's a problem. You then end up paying double the duty because the benchmarks are so high in Accra vis-à-vis Tema, vis-à-vis Lomé and Abidjan. And we have a very archaic practice. When many importers are unable to pay their duties, their cars and commodities are confiscated and auctioned off very cheaply, often much less than the duty owed. So ladies and gentlemen, for importers, the choice is clear. There is an increasing, the data shows that there is an increasing diversion of trade away from Tema port and smuggling of many items into Ghana is very tempting. Let me give you this data, just think about this. Container volumes in Lomé port between 2013 and 2018 have gone up by 300%. Lomé, container volumes between 2013 and 2018 has increased by 300%. That's 60% annually on average. Annually, Ghana between 2013 and 2016, container volumes have increased by 4.1%. So you are looking at 4.1% against 300%. So there's so much of these container volumes and when you go to the Lomé port, you see a long line up of trucks coming into Ghana. So you are seeing exactly what is happening. So because of this, cabinet, after considering all of this, has decided to implement some new reforms at the port. Cabinet is making these reforms, these decisions with the objective of increasing trade facilitation and efficiency and revenue. Port revenue depends on volume. Port revenue depends on volume. So if you don't have the trade facilitation, you will not have the volume. And if you don't have the volume, you will not have the revenue. And this is what they're thinking, they're thinking that is informing these decisions. So we are looking at increasing revenue. But to do so, we cannot be uncompetitive between Ghana and our next-door neighbours. That is just shooting ourselves in the foot. So to reduce the incidence of smuggling and enhance revenue, the benchmark delivery This, however, for vehicles, the reduction will be 30%. This is because vehicles already attract an amount of depreciation, which if you factor it in, it will take you closer to the 50%. This will be effective from tomorrow. It looks like there's a lot of support for this policy. We expect, we are doing this because we expect that we will see higher volumes coming into Ghana and we will make higher revenue. Also, ladies and gentlemen, the physical examination of containers in the port is to reduce, the benchmark we've given customs is to reduce the physical examination of containers at the port from 90% currently to 10% by June. Customs and other government operatives at the port should adhere to the recommendations of the risk engine under the paperless regime. The risk engine determines whether it's green, yellow or red. We should adhere, modern ports adhere to the risk engine. But some- But sometimes when they say it's green, they say we still have to inspect. So we want to move away from that, and customs is being directed to do that, and they've started the process actually. The risk engine allows for the incorporation of specific intelligence on containers. And where containers are selected by the risk engine for examination, there will be a joint examination which must include national security. So the joint examination should always include national security. You should never have a situation where there are separate examinations of containers by national security at the gate, right? So you should all be there, once the container is leaving the gate, it's just to make sure they've done all of it and let them leave the gate. So we don't expect that. Government, to plug the leak, will also begin, if all goes well, with the implementation of the First Port Rule in June 2019. So that we are seeing a lot of increase in transit traffic, and we think this is part of the smuggling. And we are going to implement a first port rule, which means that if you say, "I'm going to Burkina", you go to the Burkina desk and pay your duty before you leave the port. So if you are going to Niger, you go to the Niger desk, pay your duty, and go. So no duty, no exit. That's the first board rule. And we want going forward to have a flat-free structure for the port and customs changes, for any new single-window operation, no longer a structure depending on the percentage of the value of the goods. Subject to parliamentary approval, we are going to review a number of charges. And, you know, so we will be doing a review of a number of charges, the maritime security charge, the export and import charge by the shipper's authority, the importer registration fees, the EZ Pass levy, and also the ECO levy, which is a $7 per new charge and so on. Cabinet has directed that we should review them, some of them are not necessary, and send the recommendations to Parliament, and Parliament will make the necessary changes. To deal with the lack of information, ladies and gentlemen, since we are in a digitized age, there's usually a lack of, when you've brought in a container, you don't really know the status of the container in the clearance process. A mobile application has been developed that will enable importers, check the status of their consignment, and also the import duty payable online. So this application is available online at the Google Play Store now, and will also be available on iTunes, if it is already not available. It is called Ghana Trade Hub. Ghana Trade Hub. Everybody should download it, because immediately, as long as you have your import declaration form number, and you go to the Ghana Trade Hub and input your import declaration form number, it will tell you exactly how much duty you are to pay and where your container is. And you can start using it from today. You can start using it from today. These reforms are expected to increase revenues as container volumes through the port increase. However, in the short term, necessary fiscal adjustments will be made to accommodate temporary revenue shortfall, to maintain fiscal discipline. Ladies and gentlemen, what I've talked about so far is just two years of hard work. The achievements of our government have been remarkable. We are trying to do things in this country that we have not done since independence. This is what we are doing. We are changing the country, and we have a clear plan that we are following. And all the pieces are going to be fitting together. Looking to the future, one can see that Ghana's future under the leadership of President Nana Dudankwakufuado is bright, and the prospects of growth are promising. We have two years into planting of food and jobs. We look at the One District, One Factory, and emerging automobile industry, digitization. But more importantly, when you look also to the future, Ghana's recent oil discoveries would significantly boost production, starting in 2021. And we envisage to double Ghana's oil production to about 400,000 barrels a day. And the AKAD discovery will raise economic growth to over 10% of GDP, and where is more coming, because Exxon and all the other big players are coming. And it will help support as we move this economy away from the Gagizberg economy. And we are really very optimistic about that. So many infrastructure projects are coming, so much is coming. The Sino-Hydro project is starting next week with the cutting of the sword in Tamale. Next week, we start the $2 billion infrastructure development. So the president will cut the sword for the first interchange in the three northern regions, which will be the Tamale interchange next week. $1.5 billion of this money is going into roads. $1.5 billion. And the roads would be across all 16 regions of Ghana. Across. You will not have a situation where, like during the period of the NDC, where the whole of the Upper West Region, not one major road was constructed in 80 years. The whole of the Upper East Region, not one major road was constructed in 80 years. Not one major road. So we are going to make sure we distribute across all these. We have 12 fish landing sites with the CDB loan is being signed, I think today, and we should expect it to move. The Pualogo Multipurpose Dam is on the way. The Bui Hybrid is going, is project irrigation is also coming. Between Pualogo and Bui, we would have almost increased the amount of irrigable land that government has put in place from 12,980 to 60,000 hectares for irrigation between these two. There's work on the railways, as you all know, taking place. Affordable housing is coming with, big with the UN OPS. We are putting in place 100,000 affordable housing scheme that the Ministry of Works and Housing has been working with the United Nations Office of Project Services. We should cut the sword this year, and it will be a game changer in the housing market. You know, so many, so many, so in conclusion, ladies and gentlemen, in conclusion, let me reiterate that when it comes to GDP growth, we have performed better than we inherited. Agricultural growth, we have performed better. Industrial growth, we have performed better. Inflation, we have performed better. Interest rates, we have performed better. Exchange rate depreciation, we have performed better. The fiscal balance, the fiscal deficit, we have performed better. The trade balance, we have performed better. Current account balance, we have performed better. Gross international reserves, we have performed better. Jobs, we have performed better. Teacher training allowances, nursing training allowances, passport application, driver's licenses, renewal of NHIS, registering a business, cost of electricity, taxes, efficiency of clearing goods at the ports, the Right to Information Bill, the Zongo Development Fund, national ID cards, mobile payment interoperability, digital address system, one district, one factory, one village, one dam, one constituency, one ambulance, free SHS. In short, in short, ladies and gentlemen, we are managing the economy better and fulfilling our promises. But as I mentioned earlier, we still have a lot more to do. We still have a lot more to do. But this has just been two years. And I will say, we have made a solid start. Support us, support the president, Nana Dudankwakufuado, for us to deliver more.